Good evening. I'd like to call the Zoning Board of Appeals for Tuesday, September 15, 2020 to order. Will the city call the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Defoe.
Here.
Ms. Celestine?
Here.
Mr. Weigum?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Friedman?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum to conduct business.
Thank you. Are there any communications?
Yes, I want to put out there that the phone number for public comment is 1-415-655-0001, and the access code is 129-611-3496.
I'm going to repeat that just because you were kind of bleeping out a little bit there. The phone number for public comment is 1-415-655-001 with an access code of 129-611-3496. So with that, we'll move in.
And you can just check this out on the Southfield thing.
Okay, so we'll move into public comment. I'm sorry, public hearing. For those of you who haven't joined us before, let me just kind of briefly describe how we conduct business. Generally, we call the case by the case number. The city will read a brief synopsis of the case. We ask you to speak up as the appellant, state your name and address for the record, please, and then explain to us what you're asking for and why. Then we will have the city read the findings of fact. We'll ask you to agree with those or add anything at that point. We will turn it over for public comment if there's anyone on the phone who wishes to speak to that case. And then we'll turn it over to the board, deliberate, make a decision, and then move on to the next case. So will the city call the first case, please?
Yes, for ZBA case 2012, the appellant, John M. Bedell, is requesting the following waiver from the board: "To erect a fence beyond the side of the house, along a double frontage yard; zero feet is permitted and 23 feet is proposed. The property is located on the north side of Old Stream Street between Eldridge Lane and Old Stream Street at 30780 Old Stream, Sidwell Parcel, 2411-103026, zoned R.A. Single Family Residential." This appeal is to section 5.371, Article 4, paragraph C, 1, subsection D, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Hi, good evening.
Hi, good evening. How are you?
Great. If you could just state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. John Bedell, 30780 Old Stream Street. My wife and four children, we've been a resident of Southfield now for over 13 years. In December 2006, our family moved into our house at the corner of Woodgate and Old Stream Streets in the Green Trees North subdivision. We chose this particular house for several reasons. The two most important being: one, the inside would be large enough to accommodate our growing family. Our fourth child and only son would be born two months later after we moved in. Two, the corner lot would give our children plenty of room to play. And we would soon, my wife and I, would soon learn how much we had underestimated the importance of that latter point, as our yard would soon be host to neighborhood soccer, football, kickball, and baseball games, since our yard has had the most space and was centrally located. The latter reason was also what led us to believe that, if only for safety reasons, we were going to need to invest in a fence, as the traffic near our house was worrisome. Traffic on Woodgate seemed to serve as a continuation of 13 Mile Road, as we would see many cars rushing by at alarming speeds for a subdivision with young children playing. Please note that this continues to be a problem, even with the current entrance/exit closed at 13 Mile during the construction right now. Over the years, we began to realize that the wonderful corner lot home that we purchased lacked privacy in addition to the secure barrier for the kids to play. Without the risk of chasing a ball too close to a speeding car, we definitely needed a fence. Unfortunately, raising a family of six is no small financial endeavor, and even casual research into backyard fences immediately informed us that we would not be able to entertain the idea. It would have to wait. Year after year went by, with each spring begging the question about the fence, as it became known. It became a routine joke, as our neighbors would call out, "Is this the year for the fence?" While we all got a laugh out of it, we really were planning and saving for a professionally installed, high-quality fence, a fence that would not only add to the value and appeal of our property, but would also address the two main issues we had being a corner lot. One, the concern about the safety of our own children, as well as those who come to play in our yard. A large fenced-in area would give us peace of mind that our children and their friends become an accident. And two, the last 13-plus years, we have tried to enjoy the backyard to relax or entertain, but the noise, speeding cars, pedestrian traffic, and the idea that our backyard was in plain view of others made us feel as though we didn't truly own the space, let alone our privacy. As a result, we have spent very little time in the backyard. And did I mention we lived here over 13 years? We are now in a position to move forward with the fence, and we respectfully ask the zoning board to grant us a variance to proceed with the fence plans as drawn for the following reasons. One, it would give us the privacy that we have never had these past 13 years, and allow us to maximize the living space in the backyard while still ensuring a safe line of sight for pedestrians. And that would be 11 feet from the edge of our sidewalk and 16 feet from the edge of the driveway. It would also give my wife and I peace of mind that the children are safe regardless of what's happening on Woodgate. The yard would have an aesthetic balance that would benefit the value of the home. The ordinance, as described, would truncate the space, and it would make the home appear shifted to one side of the yard. Granting us permission to proceed as planned would ensure we had plenty of room for the entire family and our guests to mingle and roam. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Will the city read the findings of fact, please?
Yes, for ZBA case 2012, the appellant, John Bedell, is requesting the following waiver from the board: "To erect a fence beyond the side of the house, along a double frontage yard; zero feet is permitted, 23 feet is proposed. The property is located on the north side of Old Stream Street between Eldridge Lane and Old Stream Street at 30780 Old Stream, Sidwell Parcel, 2411-103026, zoned R.A. Single Family Residential." The properties to the north, east, south, and west are zoned R4 Single Family Residential and are developed with single-family dwellings in the Cranbrook Village subdivision 11 and 12. Field inspections of the surrounding properties reveal that the most of the surrounding properties do not have fences installed. The proposed fence will be the only fence located in the rear yard. The owner is proposing to erect a six-foot-tall vinyl fence along the Woodgate Drive at a setback of 11 feet from the property line and 23 feet from the side of the house. The fence ordinance requires that fences on double frontage lots align with the side of the house and extend to the rear of the lot. The appellant is seeking a waiver of 23 feet beyond the side of the house to the rear yard, again, that zero feet is permitted and 23 feet is proposed.
Thank you. Mr. Bedell, do you agree with those facts?
Yes, I do. And I don't know if you can make out this Google Earth mock-up, if that's clear or not.
Yeah, it's clear. Yep.
The red is the 23 feet that I'm requesting, and the bright yellow line is the line of sight that would still remain for people backing out of my driveway.
Okay, thank you. Will the city read the staff recommendation, please?
Yes, the staff's recommendation is for favorable consideration of the 23 feet beyond the side of the house with the following condition: The fence must comply with all other fence requirements, and this recommendation is based on the following: The location of the fence will blend in with the existing tree line on the property to the north. Visibility will be maintained by the fence location 16 feet back from the driveway.
Great, thank you. Mr. Bedell, do you have anything else you'd like to add, or we can go to public comment, and you certainly will have other opportunities to speak as well?
I think everything's been described accurately so far, so I have nothing else to say at the moment.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bedell, do we have anybody on the phone for public comment?
Bree, do we have anybody?
Sorry?
There are a few calls here, but if no one's speaking up now, I can, let me, they're all unmuted, so if we don't have anyone speak up, then they must be.
Okay, is there anyone on the phone that wishes to speak on public comment to this case? Okay, hearing none. We're going to close public comment, and we will turn it over to the board to discuss. Ms. Celestine, can you hear us?
Yes, I'm here.
Can I comment?
Yes, please. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Alan Hitzke. I live at 19550 Eldridge Lane. And I don't know Mr. Bedell very well, even though he only lives about four houses away from me, but just well enough to say hi and how are you once in a while. But when I saw this, I was a little surprised that he had to appeal this request, because in thinking about, I walk the neighborhood all the time. I got on my bicycle after getting the notice of the hearing, and I rode around Green Trees North, which is parts of 7th Street, about 300 homes in the northwest corner of, I'm sorry, the northwest corner of what is Cranbrook Village. And I counted how many homes there were on corner lots like Mr. Bedell's, and I came up with a total of 22 homes that faced corners as his does. Out of those 22 homes, 12 had no fences at all. 10 had fences that went all the way to the sidewalk, within a foot of the sidewalk. Five of those were stockade fences. Five of them were cyclone or chain link fences. There were two additional that went just to the edge of the house. And because of the 10 that were even less than what Mr., I'm sorry, exceeded what Mr. Bedell is proposing, I was a little surprised, and I certainly favor his request. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else on the phone that'd like to speak during public comment?
Yes, hi, my name's Vivian McCracken. I live at 19595 Eldridge Lane. My house is the house that backs up to Mr. Bedell's, and I've had several conversations with him regarding the fence, and I just wanted to let you know that I do not have any objection to the fence backing up to my lot line.
Great, thank you very much. Is there anyone else on the line? Okay, we'll go back to Ms. Celestine, please. Ms. Celestine, are you off mute?
I agree with Mr. Bedell's request. I think any other placement of the fence would be not utilitarian for the purposes of having a backyard that is usable. If it went peril, it would just be chopping up the yard, and as it was, he's leaving plenty of green space around. But there is, like, the one that, the side that is opposite Woodgate, the far side, it seems that there's a fence there between him and his neighbor, a brown wood fence. And there's definitely across the street, there's one that goes all the way across the yard. So it seems like he's not the only one that has a fence, and I think it's a very reasonable request that he's asking. There's plenty of visibility from the garage, there's plenty of visibility of people walking, and I could see that it's a walking neighborhood. There are many people out there, and I'm in favor of it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Weigum? Oh, you put yourself on mute. There you go. Nope, back on. Perfect.
All right. I don't know how you get into your house. I went up 10 Mile or 9 Mile, and I got to Evergreen, and I couldn't turn. And I said, "Oh, well, I'll go up to 14 Mile." And at 14 Mile, it stopped. I had to go all the way up and come back on Southfield Road to get over to your place. It's hard to get to your place right now with all that construction, and I feel for you. I, too, was going to mention the wooden fence in back, and I understand you're not going to do anything with that.
Are you speaking of the fence that separates my home from my neighbors?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm replacing that entire length of fence, and I've already had permission and conversations with the current owners.
All right. It will be taller than that existing fence?
They have a pool in their yard, so I'm assuming that their fences should be six feet or close to it. It's very, if you got a good look at it, it's in rough shape. It's seen better days.
Yes, it has. I didn't walk back there, so I don't know how tall it was, but it is there. I don't have any problem with this. Your neighbors obviously appreciate you, and it's a very nice development back there, so I'm in favor of it.
Mr. Friedman?
Yeah, I have no issues with the fence, you know, with double frontage lots. There's always a problem with the ordinance requiring it not go past the house, and in this case, I think it's necessary. And I don't, I think the fence looks like it's going to be a nice addition and give him a backyard that he can use more fully. So I have no issues with it.
Rogers?
Yes, I personally don't have a problem with the fence that he's requesting. I would, however, ask, after 13 years living there, did you ever think of maybe, like, planting some slender arborvitae closer to the sidewalk or whatever to create screenage and privacy? I'm just curious.
A few years ago, we had just thrown up five or six arborvitae, and I killed them by looking at them, so these things didn't last very long, so.
So, okay, you don't have a greensum, I understand. No, I mean, the only other thing I would say is that your fence is going to be white PVC. It would be nice, because just that one location where, you know, your house, that immediate area, I don't see any kind of fencing that are out, you know, that stick out prominently near the sidewalk. It'd be nice if there was some green in front of that white fence, even a limited amount. But that's just my personal take on it. Other than that, I don't have an issue with you closing your yard in for safety, and the sightlines are definitely not a problem either. So I'm all for it.
Thank you. And just for the record, there is a large spruce tree that is going to be between the sidewalk and the fence. I don't know if you can see it from the aerial picture I held up. I can hold it up again if you'd like. So it would not be a stark white fence with nothing else against it or to take the view. So it'd be a large spruce tree there to break it up a little bit.
Yeah, no, I saw that one. Yeah, it just is a little more pizzazz in front of it. Sometimes makes a white PVC fence look a little, you know, less standing out.
Well, we did the front landscaping last year, and I, let me get this fence paid for, and I probably have something lined up along that fence flowers or something. I'm wanting to try again, but, you know.
There's no rush on that. Just a thought, that's all.
Great, thank you. And I agree with my colleagues. I think, as Mr. Friedman mentioned, it's very difficult with the double frontage lot and fence placement, and I think we want you to be able to use as much of your yard as possible, so I think I'm happy to support it. So, Mr. Rogers, will you make a motion for us?
Yes, in regard to case number 20-12, the appellant, John Bedell, is requesting the following waiver from the board: "To erect a fence beyond the side of his house, along a double frontage yard; there's zero feet permitted, 23 feet is proposed. His property is located on the north side of Old Stream Street between Eldridge Lane and Old Stream Street at 30780 Old Stream. The Sidwell Parcel is 2411-103-026." I make a motion for, to approve the 23-foot variance for this fence to be erected beyond the side of the house to replace the fence that's along the other side as well, with the following condition: That the fence must comply with all other fence requirements. This motion I'm making is based upon the following: The location of the fence blends in with the existing tree line on the property to the north, and the visibility will still be maintained by the fence being located 16 feet back from the driveway.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Celestine. And then will the city call a roll call for the vote, please? Ed or you didn't? Ed? I don't know if I can call a roll call. I lost connection a minute ago as well, so I don't know for this.
We'll step into the brief. This is Les, yes. And this is Mo Friedman, yes, as well?
Jody Defoe, yes.
Myra Celestine, yes.
Jason, did you already report? If you did, I missed it. Jason?
Yes, Jason Rogers says yes.
Thank you. Your request is approved, Mr. Bedell. Good luck, and thank you for coming before the board and being a resident of Southfield.
Thank you all for your time and consideration. What are my next steps, if I can ask?
You would work with the building department to request your permit.
Okay, thank you again.
Yeah. Okay, so, Bree, if we still don't have Ed, how do we call the next case? I mean, I'm happy to read it or have someone else read it, but I don't know if that's appropriate.
Do I, really quick, do I stay on for the second?
No, Mr. Bedell, you can hang up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Hi, Jody.
Hi.
I just ran to Ed's office and ran back, and he lost connection, so he's calling in again.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
So we'll just wait a second.
Am I back?
You are. Thank you.
Yes, you are.
Sorry, it just went away. I don't know what happened.
Okay, will the city call the next case, please?
Yes, for ZBA case 2013, the appellant, Cal Mansour, signed contractor representing the owner, Whitmore Investments LLC, are requesting the following waivers from the board for a rehearing of Zoning Board of Appeals case 1735 for the reapproval of signage. The property is located on the west side of Greenfield Road between 10 Mile Road and the I-696 freeway at 25155 Greenfield Road, Sidwell Parcel, 2424-481-020, Zone B3, General Business. This appeal is to section 8.59, Article 11, and section 8.33, Article 2, Chapter 99 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the sign ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Is the appellant here? Mr. Mansour on the phone? Bree, do we have anybody on the phone? Besides Ms. Celestine and Mr. Rogers?
Yes, we have a few people. I mean, no, it's just, well, it doesn't really tell me there are phone numbers here.
There's callers.
There's one here, but that might be someone from the public. So it doesn't sound like Mr. Mansour is here.
Has there been any communication with, recently, from the building department?
Not other than the sending out of the case and the information with it. And Cal, are you out there at all?
If you're on mute, we can't hear you.
Hey, Bree, do you have Cal's number in BSNA?
Yes, I do.
Can you just give him a quick phone call?
I will do that. Give me just a second.
Okay.
This is Brianna. I wasn't able to get ahold of Cal, and I'm trying to get ahold of Slomo Goldman, who's the property owner, but the phone number seems to be a number to the store, so I don't think I'll have much luck with that.
Okay, what I would say would be to postpone this case to a, to a date certain, to the October twentieth meeting. Since we only have one residential case, this will actually make it so that we have enough cases for the October twentieth meeting.
Okay, would someone like to make, Mr. Friedman, would you make a motion for that?
I move that we adjourn this case to the October twentieth meeting.
Thank you, I'll second it. Thank you.
I have, I have one item.
Sure.
Yeah, on the second page, on number ten, it says, direction-facing Telegraph Road.
Okay, I will fix that.
Right, thank you. Do we need a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Defoe?
Yes.
Ms. Selesny?
Yes.
Mr. Weigum?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So that's the end of the public hearing. Looks like we don't have any minutes for this meeting, so let's discuss our upcoming meetings.
Yes, I guess we went into that a little bit earlier, but we, we would, staff would request that the board cancel the meeting of October sixth due to the fact that we don't have any cases for that meeting.
Okay, Mr. Weigum, will you make a motion to cancel that meeting?
Yes, and that is my birthday, by the way, so I make a motion that we cancel the meeting on October fifth.
I'll second it.
It's actually the sixth.
Oh, the sixth, okay.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Selesny, for seconding. Do we need to roll call that as well?
Yes. Ms. Defoe?
Yes.
Ms. Selesny?
Yes.
Mr. Weigum?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
Thank you, so then we have two cases.
Yes, so with that, we will have one residential and one signed case for the October twentieth meeting.
Okay, great. Is there any miscellaneous items?
Yes, there is. There is a miscellaneous item. So in your packet, you should have copies of the City of Southfield Ethics Policy, which is an annual disclosure statement, and we will need you to fill those out. If you have any questions for us, you can obviously ask, but we do need to have that, those documents back from, from you all as soon as possible.
I do have a question.
Sure.
Was the ZBA members recently added, or have we just not been in compliance for four years?
No, this is a new ethics policy, actually. These requests just came out a couple of weeks ago, because I actually had to fill one out for the retirement board that I'm a member of, so they have just come out.
Okay, so the thing that says on July eighteenth, twenty sixteen, is not?
Yeah, all I know is this just came out to be signed.
Okay.
And I had to sign one, and, you know, all the boards and commissions, obviously everybody that's on here, but it just came out to be signed.
Anybody have any discussion about it, or?
How do we get these to you?
Well, I guess, Bree, what do you think?
You can mail it to us, or if you want it, when we drop off the next packet for October twentieth, we'll pick it up.
Okay, fine.
That sound good, everybody? I'll pick it up when the, when I do the next delivery.
Okay, would you let us know when you're coming?
I'm going to mail mine.
This is Brianna. If you do choose to mail it, you can do attention, building department, and then I'll route it to HR, whoever it's supposed to go to.
Sounds good.
Okay, any other miscellaneous?
Not from staff.
Okay. All right, Mr. Weigum, will you make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I, I move that we adjourn this conference.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we need to roll call this one, too?
No, I think we're all right.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll see you, everybody, on October twentieth. Thank you.
Thank you.